You heard his disembodied voice earlier.
Oh, good, because we don't really have the Vallejo Room.
Thanks.
Hi, man. We're getting the button up here.
Sorry, yeah.
He's the chair.
Yeah. It is six o'clock and 59 seconds, and I'm calling to order. And I'm gonna use this gavel one time because I just want to. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the great republic which stands one nation under our eyes, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Great. And now we'll move on to the roll call.
Yes, roll call. Chair Wise.
Here.
Vice Chair Vidor.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Thorson is absent. She had to work, and Commissioner Schaefer, she may be late. I did not hear from her. So we have a quorum of five.
Moving on to communications, the, is Councilman Mateus gonna be here? Or should I?
He may be here. I spoke with him last week. I believe that they are still doing commission, board and commission interviews in the Vallejo Room. So he may join us later, depending on how long that goes.
Well, then, let's just skip right to the Commission Secretary report.
Yes, thank you. I want to remind everyone of the Board and Commission's appreciation event on October 30th as suite treatment. So those of you who have RSVP, please attend. And also, I would like to report, because Commissioner Thorson is not here, that, but she did email me, that she's continuing to work researching the Measure P proposal. She has reached out to different individuals trying to get a better understanding of pricing and costs. And she's requested if anyone has the ability to reach out to someone else as well, people who they know, for perhaps costing out some of the items that's on the list in Measure P proposal, please do so. That's the end of my report. And I'd like to report that Commissioner Schaefer arrived at 6:03.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to presentations and commendations. It says there are none. So we'll move right on to the community forum.
I believe Manny will start the.
Through the chair. Yeah, through the chair. Apparently, do not have any members of the public who've signed up for this item. I'm unable to turn on the timer at this current point in time, but I will keep track for two minutes. If anybody signs up within that time, I will be sure to let you know. Feel free to carry on with the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, now, consent calendar and approval of agenda. Item A, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Allen and seconded by Vice Chair Vidor to approve the agenda for October 27, 2025. Roll call. Chair Wise.
Yes.
Vice Chair Vidor.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Passes six to zero. Thank you.
Great. And now, moving on to the approval of minutes.
I approve minutes.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Vice Mayor Vidor. The minutes of the regular September 22nd, 2025 meeting. Roll call. Chairman Wise.
I will vote present, because I was not here.
So you like to abstain?
Abstain.
Okay.
Rather.
Vice Chair Vidor.
I'm sorry. Say again.
Minutes.
Yes. Sorry, I was reading at the same time. Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Oh, yes. Definitely, yes.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
That passes five to zero with one abstention. Thank you.
Excellent. Now we're moving on to the action calendar. There's just one item today, which is Item A, the Goal Setting Work Plan. The recommendation is to review the proposed goals and proposed fiscal year 2026 through 2027 budget for work plan categories and create an ad hoc subcommittee. I know we've been, we've been building up to this one for a long time. I, again, I'm very sorry I missed last month's prep up to it. We all have lives. Things happen. Has everyone had a chance to read? Should I re, I could read into the record what is on here? Or?
I would like to, before, you can read into the record if you like, but it's in the pack, it's a public document. But if you would like to do so, at last month's meeting was discussion that this meeting would be a one-topic meeting in Goal Setting Work Plan. We didn't have really any other items to discuss, but the Commission really wanted to concentrate on this, to move it forward. It was requested that each Commissioner provide their proposals, comments, and ideas by October 6. As you can see, Commissioner Thorson provided hers September 23rd, and Vice Chair Vidor provided hers October 21. Luckily for her, I hadn't sent out the packet yet. So those were the only two attachments that I received, and you can go over them. Some of them are duplicate. But if you would like to read into the record, Chair Wise, you can.
Yeah. I'd rather like, I'd like to read these out loud, because I, it's helpful for me. I, to hear what we have here, and then we can just discuss if there's anything else we'd like to add now. I do think creating a subcommittee is a good, is a great plan. Commissioner Thorson wrote, number one, to partner with local nonprofits and GVRD to produce free arts and culture workshops and events for kids and families in Vallejo Parks with the goal of supporting community building, wellness, and public safety. And object two, partner with Economic Development Commission, Beautification Commission, GVRD, Public Works, and Local Nonprofits, i.e., One People Tribe, to create new murals in Vallejo and support paid youth muralist training programs and career development and entrepreneurship opportunities for Vallejo youth. Offer mural services to local businesses as graffiti abatement prevention. This idea courtesy of Izzy Drumghool. And Vice Chair Vidor wrote, number one, collaborate with Beautification Commission, Economic Development Commission, and Sister City Commission on various beautification projects such as murals, public art projects, and cultural celebrations. Item two, partner with GVRD, Vallejo Teaching Artists, Vallejo Art Studios, and Mural Creating Organizations such as One Tribe to identify locations to install art and hold cultural events. Item three, create database of local artists for government, local, and regional organizations to draw from. Item four, request $200,000 from general funds for re-granting program. Item five, pass long-term funding for the arts policy. A, establish a matching fund for grant writing purposes. B, provide $100,000 to $200,000 for CCA granting program. C, provide funding for artsvallejo.org, the city listing of events. And D, support specific cultural events and programs in Vallejo. Six, pass loan policy and gift policy, either as separate policies or a single policy. Seven, reinstall the public art in storage and move the wooden sculptures to a more visible location. And eight, move notice boards or creative new public notice board at the Vallejo waterfront for more engagement with community. I, just to start, if anyone has any comments, I'm happy to call someone. I do, I think these are all great. I would love to just formally, in there, the sort of a undercurrent of all of it, but I would, I do just want to make sure maybe we spell out explicitly that, you know, we have our goals, we've passed a number of things, but just supporting, supporting artists in Vallejo as our sort of number-one purpose for being, which I think all of these other things kind of fall into, but just making sure that that's spelled out as a very explicit part of the work plan. Commissioner Hernandez.
Thank you. Looking at both of those, I also agree with all of them. I have request the $200,000 from general funds for re-granting, except for I would like to more break it down into like maybe $200,000 grants so that we can have like two different rounds for two different projects, whatever that may be, whether it's gonna be something that has for art or maybe for an artistic event or for an event for culture. So that that way, it could be spread and not just, you know, dumped into one pot. Another one, the matching funds for the long-term funding. I think if we can have something like that established and passed, that would be great. So throughout our year, when we are getting grants, we will have a way to have it matched, and then we'll have more to work with that way.
Could I quickly pause the meeting?
Okay.
Councilman Mateus is here, and I think is time limited, I'm suspecting?
I'm really sorry to derail the conversation, but we're currently interviewing applicants for GVRD and Measure P and the Surveillance Advisory Board. Shameless plug, anybody who's watching, who's interested in applying to many of our boards and commissions, we have openings, and we would very much appreciate to have you throw your hat in the ring and, you know, participate in all the work that we've got to move forward for a beautiful city. So I'll give a quick update. For the month of October, since we're just closing out October, we have continued to work really diligently to open up the permanent supportive housing projects that need to come online. We're still working on the Broadway project, and we're gonna be in a position to offer an update to the city tomorrow, tomorrow's meeting. Similarly, the council also approved $500,000 expenditure for a security guard program that will serve as supplemental assistance to the police department and more generally to the community beginning very soon. And so, as I've been sharing over the course of this year, part of what we're hoping to accomplish through this process is to have a really robust crime prevention and more generally, a robust public safety program that residents feel assured about and that they can, you know, by extension, knowing that we're doing that work, get out and invest in their community and make moments and create memories in their community. And so that's something that has moved forward. We also looked at, and I just want to preview this today. We received a report, there was a consultant that was looking at whether or not there were some efficiencies that the city could realize from reorganizing our boards and commissions. We have 19 of them, which is a pretty high number. And so those recommendations were shared with the council two meetings ago. And what we're going to do is ask each of the commissions, all 19 of them, what is perhaps your perspective on those recommendations that were shared? And what were some changes that you would recommend to make sure that we're working in partnership with one another? And where we can realize efficiencies, we are realizing said efficiencies. So that will be in the agenda sooner rather than later. We did vote on having that be a next step for all 19 commissions. And then we'll have a follow-up discussion as a council to move some of those recommendations forward with your input, because that was lacking from the first phase of the project. Personally, I attended the Cal Cities Conference in Long Beach. It's an annual event for elected officials. And there, I had an opportunity to talk to my peers from other cities and also connect with other folks that are centering art in a lot of the work that they're doing. And that gets me to the culture, the cultural district. As you guys are aware, earlier this year, I had been in contact with Senator Cabaldin's office and with the Arts Council to see if the city of Vallejo could reapply to officially get a cultural district designation. And just this past week, the Solano Arts Council was notified that the state arts council has selected Vallejo as a semifinalist, and they will be coming later this week for, this Thursday, for a site visit. And that site visit will have a delegation of folks from across the community making the pitch that we should be included in the next set of cultural districts to be appointed by the state and to have that very valuable designation. We're very rich in both culture, in the arts, and I think for a whole host of reasons, we should have that designation. And hopefully, that visit on Thursday goes really well. And in the next couple of months, we can put that and build on the work that we're doing through this commission and through many other organizations across the community. So that's the update I have to share at this time. Happy to answer any questions. And I'm sorry, I'm just running from one place to the other. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for coming and talking. That's extremely exciting that we've made the semifinals. Is it, would it be possible to get details on that meeting so that perhaps members of this commission could have a presence at that site visit?
The site visit is managed by Karma Solano County Arts Council. It's limited to a number of participants. I know that two of the commissioners are there, will be in attendance, not representing the commission, but their organizations. I want to make sure I say that correctly. Daya Vidor will be there for Shakespeare in the Park. And Mr. Allen will be there, Trevor Allen, will be there for the Vallejo Museum.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. And Councilmember Mateus and I will be there. I'll be there representing the economic development and the liaison to this commission. And Councilmember Mateus is there because he is the city council liaison to this commission as well as the Economic Development Commission. And again, his past activities with the state on this.
To your question, I think we can follow, we can certainly follow up with Ms. Lack and see if, you know, you and your capacity can.
I, she shared with me, I, the reason I'm comfortable answering the questions because she shared with me the number of people.
Okay. So that has been decided on?
Yes.
Okay. Understood.
So documentation.
No, we just, okay. It's, next person is Commissioner Vidor.
Vice Chair Vidor.
Would it be possible for me to be there in both capacities as Vallejo Shakespeare in the Park and as a representative of the commission?
I think that we can discuss that under, we can't take a vote on that under his presentation, but we can discuss that maybe under future business or something of that nature. You and both, Commissioner Allen. Because you're both, I'm sorry, because you're both, you were the ad hoc committee. So I think it's appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
I'll actually defer to my colleague, Commissioner Schaefer had her hand up first.
I just wanted to know where we can find. Oh. Where we can find documentation for the Solano County Arts, this, it's not a competition, but yeah, the information on the districts and how the cultural arts districts are determined.
You can go to the state website for cultural districts, and it, it lays out the requirements and past cities that were selected.
And if I'm not mistaken, there's probably somewhere between 10 and 13 districts right now the city of Vallejo previously applied. But because of the pandemic, that process did not move forward when we applied. And I think.
I believe there's 10, there are 10 current, and those terms have expired. And right now, my understanding is, I think there are 10 to 12 semifinals that they're looking at, and they will make a selection from after the tour, site tours. And then it will be for two years, and those who are selected will get $10,000 to use.
And then in addition to that, you get technical assistance from staff at the state level, co-branding opportunities, slash marketing opportunities. And those are the sorts of things that I think, you know, would be deeply beneficial to our community and to our city. So fingers crossed, we're able to make a good impression later this week and, you know, move that process forward in the next couple of months.
Commissioner Allen, did you have a further comment?
I think you, you have another question, so.
I'll get this down. Are there any notable cities that we're in competition with? Do you recall the other cities, the other cities we're in competition with?
I don't know the list. I don't know who was selected at this time.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Allen?
I, mindful of your time, and first of all, city council member, thank you for being here, thank you for being our liaison. It's my understanding, we may or may not have a November meeting, depending on whether we can decide whether that's gonna happen the week of Thanksgiving. We're not going to have a December meeting, generally speaking. So this may be my last time to ask this question. So again, this is, you're just the recipient of the question for the city council. I'd like an update, and again, not now, not to put you on the spot, but again, if we don't meet and I'm not here, I'll kick myself for not asking. For update on the loan policy, the art loan policy that so many people worked tirelessly on years and years ago, and this is my eighth year, so I remember when the late Rabbi Finkelstein also worked on this. This is how long it goes back. So the loan policy, separate to that, the gift policy. And the third sort of elephant in the room is the fundraising. We've been through this many different times, called many different things, whatever that means, so that the Culture and Arts Commission, and if the Culture and Arts Commission is deemed part of another commission to consolidate the teens into maybe a few more, or if it's going to be part of, well, fundraising or an arm of fundraising for culture and arts events so that a re-granting program flows through this, a matching funds program, an angel program to give money specifically to the arts. I just want to make sure that it's not lost, all this, all the work that had been done before on raising money for the arts so that it's not always the Culture and Arts Commission coming with a handout, asking for money from the general fund. Does that make sense? So those, those three things.
So at the boards and commissions presentation that was shared out by the consultant and by the city staff, I specifically asked, you know, what the status was of not just resolutions passed by your commission, but resolutions passed by measure, the Measure P commission, the Economic Development Commission. And unfortunately, it kind of got lost in the conversation we were having. The general point I was making to my peers was that we needed to give direction to the city attorney's office and to the city manager's office, that they needed to prioritize that work because that's also a part of the commissioner experience. If there, if you guys are engaging in discussions, you take formal action, you move that over to the council, it's not making its way to the council, then you're really not gonna be in a position, when we ask you in a few months, what's your general experience? to be in a position when we ask you in a few months, what's your general experience? Like, serving on a commission to really say, well, at its optimal level, this was my experience, because you haven't really felt that. And I made those comments are public. That conversation is coming back in a different form tomorrow, because we're talking about referrals, like I, it's essentially giving direction to staff on what projects we want them to pursue. So I will again commit myself to elevating that tomorrow night. But unfortunately, when I did bring it up a few meetings ago, there were more general comments being made about the fact that we needed to just get input from you guys, we needed to have study sessions, and so it kind of, it got lost in the sauce. So I will follow up tomorrow again, and I will continue to ask for updates when I meet with the city attorney and the city manager. And I'll report back.
Thank you. And thank you for your hard work. I understand. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Vice Chair Vidor?
So I just wanted to bring up the long-term funding for the arts, which I've been working on for the eight years. The way that it was written, it will not touch general funds. And that's why it's a good plan to bring forward. We are, what's been written is very unique. There are several elements in there that are just boilerplate, kind of 3P, which, you know, that sort of thing, which is public-private partnership for those that don't know. And in other forms, but there are other fundraising and revenue builders in it that are unique to this. And I really think that taking this bold step towards funding our arts and culture is also a bold step towards economic development of our city, because we all know that cities develop through economics, through arts, their economics are developed through the arts, because that's what draws people in for tourism, it draws people in from the city, and it gets people excited about the city, and also it loosens their wallets, which is what we want. Right? And so I just think that it would be a good idea to be able to move the long-term funding for the arts forward, also known as percent for the arts.
You're, I'll finish with this. Your actual, your comment actually made me think of something just now. I recall that two or three meetings ago, when you raised the question, in between meetings, I had asked for an update from the city attorney's office, and part of the response I got was that there were some questions that they had in relation to how the draft policies were formulated. I think one thing I can do while we figure out the more general piece of getting direction from the rest of my peers, or getting a majority of them to provide that direction, is just schedule a meeting that can include the chair with the city attorney's office to see if we can perhaps sort that out, since you guys have been part of those discussions. And then if we can sort that out, then that makes the process of getting things over to the council a much smoother one. So I'll do that, we'll coordinate, and we'll do that in between meetings, and we'll make sure to get, have the staff secretary, Ms. Taylor, share out an update with you guys over email. So I will do that, maybe two meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That would be, that would be fantastic, because it is the policy that we most recently passed, drafted and passed here. It was, like, we already worked with Veronica Neb, and it is, more than anything, it just emboldens us to begin any other work. So there is a real, like, we'd like, yeah, to get that done.
We'll get it done.
And please include me in that meeting.
100%.
Thank you.
And that's the end of my report. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure. Now, Commissioner Hernandez?
So I also was with the partner with the other commissions on the special projects. I, I think that's important. I think that's also kind of going in with what Councilmember Mathias just said, how we need to have more partnerships with our other commissions. And let's see, the partnering with GVRD on some special projects. And then I'm listing them differently because I don't want to group them all together, they're all separate things. And I want them to see that we're willing to work on each separate thing simultaneously if we need to, if we have the funding for these projects to go. Another one that I added would be request some sort of monetary number for the digital marketing, QR codes or cards to promote our commission, so that that way we can have, in turn, well, we have a long-term funding goal that we're going to include, but then this way, it's a direct funnel. So while we're working on that, we might be able to have something like that going. So whatever cost it would take to have something as simple as just the QR code that we can spread around, you know, business cards, anything would be great. And I think it would be low cost, but we would have to specify exactly the budget numbers so that that way they could see that we're willing to just, to run with it. And that's what I have in addition to what Commissioner Thorson and Vice Chair Vidor put out.
I want to throw out there, following up, very important measure, I did some budget work that I sent you before our September meeting, that I don't know if it ever entered the sphere, but we had briefly talked about getting a professionally done brochure, which I think is a very important thing, we should do it, that showcases the art, have professional photos, all of that. I did a little bit of research in that. To get 2,000 brochures as a starting point from organization PS Print, who are based in Oakland, is $358.41. And if we wanted to hire out, the budget number that I had come up with was if we were to hire an outside designer, I actually think potentially we could do it ourselves. But if we wanted to, of budgeting an additional $500, which would be sort of a standard rate for about a 10-hour job. And then I also did do some research for, we talked about getting a rubber stamp with a customizable address, which I found for $10.50 plus tax and shipping, and get a carbon copy form so we can collect donations as an additional, I found an $89 charge for that. All of those things together came to $964.87 as an amount to ask for. But I would say that I feel the most passionately about that $358.41, which is to collect, to create, to have printed 2,000 brochures. That if there was a concern from the city, I think we could, I have some design experience, I think we're, we all know artists, there was a way that we could do that without cost, but it would be great if we could pay someone to do it.
Okay, through the chair, Chairman Wise, that information was in our September packet. So all the commissioners, no, no, all the commissioners have that, no, you were able to attend. Again, regarding budgets, when you do your work plan, that will be part of your budget. And if approved, those amounts will be included as, in the Economic Development Commission, their first year or last year, they requested $10,000, and they received it, they rolled part of that over because it wasn't spent. As I shared last month, that this can be a two-year work plan, it doesn't have to be limited to one, it can be a phased work plan. I think that would accommodate some of the things that you want to do, short-term, midterm, long-term. I think later on, it will be up to the commission if they choose to, to select an ad hoc committee to go over all of these things. I think it would be helpful that if, in fact, there are additional comments like Commissioner Hernandez provided, that you email me those. Right. And so once the ad hoc committee is selected, I can send it out to everyone, but they will have, they will have what's presented tonight in the packet as well as any other comments. So everything will be captured. But once again, you have to provide me the list. So please do so, and I will give you, if in fact the ad hoc committee is selected tonight, I would ask that your comments be sent to me by Monday next week. That way I can provide it to the ad hoc committee, they can work on it.
Commissioner Schaefer?
I just had, I have a question about the digital mark, oh, I keep forgetting that. I had a question about the digital marketing. Are we talking about digital marketing for the committee itself, or for events, or artists, or anything that we are kind of promoting? What, when you talked about that, what were you?
Through the chair. It was more digital marketing for our commission, because our commission can umbrella that, and then we can, you know, we'll end up doing ad hoc committees, figuring out what the project is, what the requirements would be, things like that. We'd work on it once we get it, if we have it. But then we've had experience doing those types of grants before. And so I think because of that, we might be able to showcase that and possibly get more for it. So that, the digital marketing was more, in my opinion, it was geared towards our commission and not towards the individual projects, although we can help them with their individual projects once we're able to get them established.
Okay. And I just have one comment, and that is, it seems like that goes hand in hand with your brochure, that they, the same artists would be doing that kind of stuff.
Through the chair, pretty much. It would be like the same thing, just a different avenue, because then one of them is something you could give out at farmers market, it's a physical thing.
Right.
Some, you know, a lot of artists are very physical, but then there's also the digital age where, you know, while you're scrolling through Facebook, you can see the QR code or something, you know? We want to be able to have that available for us, I think.
Yeah, and, is it okay for me to speak? And it also seems like when we're, I know that later on, we're going to talk about that artist list and whatnot, and what does that include? Is that visual, digital artisans? And so that kind of, I was just going on your, you know, we're very visual, but the arts are more, more than that. And if we can get into the digital.
Oh, yes. If we can just find more avenues that we can spread it through.
Right.
Other than just like, you know, handing out the brochures. Having them available is awesome, but then I think, you know, having a digital way of doing it as well is so much faster, and we can get them farther out.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
Through the chair?
Commissioner Allen?
Can we, on the Arts and Culture Commission, I don't know if this has to be an official request, but can we agree that we're not going to use AI on this brochure about the arts? And I don't know if that means we're opening ourselves up to artists, can you, you know, design a poster, design a whatever, something like that, where we actually do open it up to real, living artists that have to pay their bills? But I, I'm assuming I don't need to say this, where we weren't thinking about doing the AI, but as soon as we talk about, we need to do it cheap and fast, that often comes up, so.
No, I could not, could not agree more. This is to feature, this is a showcase of art in Vallejo and not, you know, billionaires in San Francisco, so.
Here, here.
Are there any other point? I personally do feel that we should create an ad hoc to do this, but I'm not, are we ready to move that forward? Vice Chair Vidor, you have a look on your face like you have something to say, perhaps?
I, I would agree with putting together an ad hoc committee at this meeting, although one of the commissioners, commissioners is not here. And I get the impression that they may want to be on it, but these are the downfalls of not being able to attend. So I would, I would go forward with developing an ad hoc. But I did want to also address the artist registry, which we have been working on for a while, and every time we work on it, it's part of the digital process. We get, we, we, we go too far with it.
Sorry.
That's what I would say. We are only putting together the database, we're not collecting all of the information. All we need is to say, this is what we want on the database. And then it is incumbent on the artists to submit their information if they want to be on the registry. And prior to this, for some reason, everybody thought that they needed to collect the artists' and their names and their information, and we don't do that. So, so the artist registry is really a very simple thing, and I think that it could be easily put together, and I think the digital background would be a wonderful addition to that.
Through the chair? I think we were on the same subcommittee ad hoc at some point about this many iterations ago. It would be in the record. Gretchen Zimmerman, who worked on the website, had a whole artist-driven database and a full graphical user interface where the artists could put their information as much as they felt free to put on the web. And knowing that, you know, scrapers go out and take all this information, a lot of people were mindful of their privacy, but if they're their own LLC or whatever, if they have their own brand as an artist, that was what they were putting on there. So again, I think it may be time to not reinvent the wheel or the same database and just kind of go back to what we already had. And I think you'll find that a lot of those questions are already been addressed, if they weren't fully fleshed out. But I think it might be a good skeleton or an outline of how you can piece this together. And I wish you all the best of luck. I would normally say, I'd love to be on the ad hoc. It looks like this may be my last meeting, unless we have a November, December.
No, no!
No, no. I mean, it's eight years, so I feel like, but what I'm saying is, again, baby with the bathwater, there's a lot of this work that had been done, and it may be that some of this is digitally shovel-ready, and you can work in a sandbox with Gretchen or the, who's doing the website for the city, because the, all of the grant applicants and their, the fundees, the grant recipients, all their information is also on the website. So you may find, Chair Wise, when you come to get the brochure with the artists, we've got a bunch of images that have already been, they've signed off on, that's part of the city's website, it's part of the outward-facing, this is what the diversity of art in Vallejo is. So I think you may already find that you already have a lot of this, and that some of the artists that are still in town working have already given their information. So it may just be going back to them, going, we're ready to finally roll this out. Cool. Thanks.
Oh, maybe, I was gonna say, is it, could you, would you be able to dig through the, and find that, unearth that? Is it unearthable, the, the previous work that had been done by an ad hoc in this commission in the past?
The, a couple of things, and then I'll address that. The previous ad hoc committee for the artist registry had a different approach, I'll put it that way. I won't say they went too far, but they had a different approach, and they found it difficult to get the information, and then it created a conflict within the artist, a community, I'll put it that way. In speaking with Gretchen, because she did come to one of our commission meetings, and she does have a database, I think she would like to be compensated for the database. And so if you're putting that in your work plan, you have that as a line item, and you have it as a budget. So that's how you would approach that. As far as the list of past art, grant recipients, it's on the Economic Development Commission's webpage for the two, for the two years, so that's, that's easily accessible. So that's where that is.
Through the chair, Staff Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, a few years ago, there was a work presentation or a PowerPoint presentation that went before city council that included a bunch of photos, and I think. that included a bunch of photos. And I think those photos were of happy grant recipients, sort of showing what the taxpayer money was being used for. I could be wrong, but I, I wasn't there for that presentation, I wasn't, I was not vice chair at the time, happily so. But the presentation itself should still exist in the public record, or we can get those images, right?
Yes, I did the PowerPoint.
You did, yeah, okay.
Along with commissioners. So, yes, we collected pictures and made the presentation. There were some recipients, if I recall correctly, because that was two years ago, three years, three years ago, at least, two or three years at least.
Yeah.
So the PowerPoint, I believe, I should still have it in my files, although my computer crashed
Oh, no.
last month. And so now I'm finding things that I didn't know, I lost. Trying to find things that I didn't know I lost, but I should have the PowerPoint presentation, or if not, there's a date, but it's, again, it's public record, so it was shown to the City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Again, any item that you may want in your work plan, please have a line item budget for it. And again, regarding the digital aspect of it, it could be both. Whatever the, you discussed this evening, whatever the ad hoc committee, if created, recommend, whatever this commission, after recommendation, approve, or massage, or whatever, then we go for it with that. There may be a meeting, I was going to do this later, but in November, last month, I said there may not be a meeting because of Thanksgiving holiday, because it's the Monday of Thanksgiving week. I'm willing to come in that Monday, if in fact, there will be a quorum, because that will be the fourth Monday of the month, before Thanksgiving. So, not at this time, but when it comes to future meeting on the list, we can take a poll to see who will be here, who won't be here.
Thank you.
One other thing, Commissioner Miller, do you have some suggestions? I knew you had had some suggestions before regarding, I think it was Measure P. Do you have any suggestions regarding any ideas on the work plan?
A lot of the ideas I see on here is in alignment of what I was thinking about doing, just doing more partnership with the kids and going through the communities.
Then, if that's the case, I would like to motion, I would like to move to form a subcommittee to do the, to set up our work plan. And I would like, yeah, I motion to form that subcommittee.
The subcommittee, the ad hoc subcommittee can have no more than three commissioners. And I will leave it at that, to see who wants to, I will say there, because I am who I am, I will say that there should be at least one seasoned commissioner on this ad hoc subcommittee, who has been through the process and be able to help guide you. And I'm available, and then, and then I'm available as well as staff, but just so it's, it goes smoothly.
Vice Chair Vidor.
I would be willing to be on that ad hoc.
I think we need to do a motion. I guess we can ask volunteers if you like, but then, I think your motion is second, and then, and then the appointment.
I was looking for a second, but a volunteer will do as well.
I second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved by Chair Weiss, and seconded by Commissioner Schaefer, to form a work plan ad hoc subcommittee, consisting of no more, no more than three commissioners. Vote. Chair Weiss?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vidor?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
Great. We already have, Vice Chair Vidor has volunteered. I would also gladly volunteer.
I would love to volunteer.
Is there anyone else who would, who was itching to be a member? I don't have to be on it, but I am, I am.
I'd love to be on it, but, thanks.
He's so gracious.
Cool. In that case, I think we can say Commissioner Schaefer, Vice Chair Vidor, and myself, Chair Weiss, as the subcommittee.
Okay, I'm going to read you.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm going to go back.
I'm out of, I'm out of practice.
No, 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 no. Because it'll be in the minutes that a subcommittee was formed, and the members consist of Chair Weiss, Chair Vidor, and Commissioner Schaefer. So that's how it will read.
Great. Perfect. On that, I'm going to move on, I think, unless there are any notes poking around.
Through the chair, just a clarification. Before Councilmember Matias showed up, Commissioner Hernandez was talking about a specific, about 100,000, and maybe another 100,000, in the two, in, I was going to get this right, Vice Chair Vidor, it's request number four, request 200,000 from general funds for re-granting program, correct? The split between the 100 and 100, I'd like to, if, do you guys get in the weeds on this? Recognize that the pilot program was 50,000, and was open to individual artists, as well as organizations. There was another $100,000 similar, and then there was $100,000 that was ARPA funds, and it was restricted to only nonprofits. Individual artists were excluded that year, or that, for that term. I would love to see it so that this was not the case again, so that artists will always be eligible, as long as they fit specific criteria, whether that is part of Vallejo, or whatever that is. But I would be arguing against nonprofits, because I think the nonprofits really need some money, too. So if it's a clean split of 100 and 100 between the two, or some measure thereof, that's rationalized between the ad hoc and the advisory body to the City Council, that this is why we need 200,000. And if you're going to go after, again, ARPA funds are gone, but there's sometimes federal funding that has hooks in it, and you can't give it to an individual artist, even if they're fiscally sponsored by a nonprofit, which is problematic. So I just want to make sure that that's baked in. So 100,000, or some set amount for individual artists, and then also recognizing cultural events, and cultural institutions, organizations, nonprofits, and NGOs. Does that make sense?
Through the chair, that was kind of the reason why I tried to break it down into two, so that that way it's spread more, and not just, you know, pouring into one bucket or the other. It should feed more.
Brilliant, thank you.
Which is what we always tried to do our best with, with re-granting.
Through the chair. Mr. Schaefer.
Oh, okay. Officially, through the chair. Okay. My understanding as far as ARPA, ARPA is gone, but I thought Solano County had set up that ARPA granting, that those funds, so that they are paid back, so you can go and request more again. I don't know if, I just wanted to put that out there, I don't know.
Through the chair, there was the city ARPA funds, county ARPA funds, and I believe those funds end in December of this year for the county. Because ours, we still have some that ends December of this year for certain projects. We were fortunate, and this commission did a very good job of spending the ARPA funds ahead of time.
Through the chair. Through the chair. The, the ARPA did, does stop December, but this particular, the way Solano County did it, is that they are, they funded folks in their loans, they're not just grants, they're loans, so people have to pay it back. So there's, that's, that way it keeps the fund going. I don't know if they're still calling it ARPA, but that fund is continuous, because people pay it back, and there's money there.
Are you speaking of grants for the arts? Or we did, no, because, no, there is a loan, a small business loan fund, that is the city's ARPA funds, that we asked the county, not the county, but Solano EDC, SBDC, to manage for us, and it's a small business loan fund, and it's a revolving loan fund. It was $355,000 that was first designated to go for our economic development strategic plan, but we weren't able to select a consultant prior to the deadline, so we were able to then provide those funds, because it was economic development funds for small business loans. So that, it's not for grants, or for art and culture, it was a revolving loan fund for our small businesses.
Yeah, that might be it, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, good question. While I have the mic, I suggest that, as Commissioner Hernandez has her comments, and to specify, to break it down clearly, so the ad hoc committee can understand what it is, that her ideas are, that would be helpful, as specific as you can be in your suggestions, recommendations, again, by Monday next week, and I will pass it on to, I will provide it to all of you, but I'll definitely provide it to the ad hoc committees, consisting of Chair Weiss, Vice Chair Vidor, and Commissioner Schaefer. And also, last month, you, and I put it on the agenda for you to discuss as part of the work plan, articles for the Vallejo Weekly, if you want to continue that, as well as the commission webpage update. And that might be under digital, whatever, marketing so forth and so on. So you may want to, it was on the agenda, because you had brought that up, but it hasn't been mentioned at this meeting, so are those items that you do want to include in the work plan? And so if so, you may publicly discuss those.
Great. Yeah, we can move on to the future items here, as just mentioned. Are there any comments on the commission webpage update?
No, my point was that it was suggested that it be part of the work plan, so the question would be, do you want to put that in as part of those two items, as part of the work plan? Because it was, see, we'll, we'll discuss it, and maybe we'll put it part of the work plan. So instead of waiting for another month to put it on the agenda, we can discuss it tonight. You can discuss it tonight.
Through the chair. For the webpage update, you've got update here, is that, is there presently a website for the commission? There is?
Yes.
Okay, because I haven't seen that, okay.
It, it's, it's, right now, the list that Commissioner Allen speaks of, it's there. That's what's there. It's, so whatever this commission may want to do, once upon a time, it had all of our Vallejo Weekly, because the commission did that for almost a year, at least six months, a year, in the articles. And you can go back and look at past Vallejo Weekly, and, and sometimes, we were the only, one of the few articles that were in there. They were very, very well done. Got a lot of compliments regarding that. So if in fact, you want to include that in your work plan, and if you think you may need funding for it, if you don't need funding for it, just put it as an item that perhaps you may want to do an article in the Vallejo Weekly Quarterly, and that would be a milestone for you to be able to accomplish.
Through the chair, I do think that it should be a part of the work plan. I mean, it's part of the marketing.
One, one point I might, I'd like to bring up related to this, is I do feel like, in the time since that initial thing, there's, there's been the creation of the Vallejo Sun, which I think is read more widely at this point than the Vallejo Weekly, or maybe that is just my own bias from the circle that I exist in. But it might be worth discussing with reaching out to them, as well as a, in, as we continue to have this presence in the papers, I do think the Vallejo Sun has done a very good job of sort of spreading their footprint, and they're a very good organization.
I will have to check with our, most of our, most of our, especially for our commission, it goes through our public information officer. So I don't know if the commission can do a press release directly to the Vallejo Sun. I'd have to check that, but, because again, the commission is advising, all things have to go through the City Council.
Vice Chair Vidor.
Thank you, through the chair. So previously, the Vallejo Weekly, we would all provide information from a local artist, or arts organization, or cultural organization, and that was posted in the Vallejo Weekly. I know for myself, I feel like I have exhausted all of my artists and friends that, that were willing to do it. Yeah. So, but there are new people on our commission that should know people that we don't know, and hopefully we'll be able to get more submissions for the Vallejo Weekly. I do like the idea of doing something in the Vallejo Sun as well, and maybe we can talk to the PIO Officer, Robert Bruceno, and see if he would want to share that information with the Vallejo And then, the other thing that I wanted to bring up, of course, I moved my papers So, oh, so in the proposal that I sent, number five, which includes the establish a matching fund, provide the 100,000 to 200,000 for the granting program, and provide funding for the artsvallejo.org, which would be separate from the 100,000 to 200,000, which I like the idea also of splitting that money, maybe splitting it into arts and culture, separate. And then, support specific cultural events and programs in Vallejo. I have an old brochure, I believe it's from the 80s, that was put together by the Arts Commission at that time, and I'll bring that to you guys, so when we, when we all meet, we can all see it. But the city of Vallejo used to support specific events every year, and support specific cultural organizations and arts organizations as well. And that's one, that's the support specific cultural events and programs in Vallejo. And when we look at that brochure, I'm hoping that we'll be able to identify certain events and certain arts organizations that would get regular funding yearly from us, because they would be doing work, or not from us, from the city of Vallejo, to continue with their work. And they would be outside of the granting. And I agree with Commissioner Allen, that we really need to get back to funding individuals and individual artists, because I think that that is something that individual artists really need. They need that acknowledgement, they need to know that they are valued. They need that acknowledgement, they need to know that they are valued, and also everybody deserves to be compensated for their work, and it is artwork, not art fun time.
Yes, through the chair, regarding funding organizations and cultural events, that is now being done out of the city manager's office. It's a competitive process, you have to do RFP, I believe, as done by Shelley Lockmeyer, Lock Miller, is the, is the staff that works on that. So there is that funding now. The city council appropriate, appropriates X amount of dollars, and they've been doing that thing for the past couple of years. Back in the 80s, funding came from the redevelopment funds, and that was used for the jazz festival, arts festival, things of that nature. Those funds, it was the Wednesday Night Walk, which Main Street did back in the day, but those, we no longer have those funds. But they are funds right now, whether the council will put it in next year's budget or not, I don't know. But they have funded a number of organizations through that. So most, a lot of the events that you're seeing going on the waterfront and downtown are recipients of those funds. And so what you may want to say is if, I don't know if they would give the money to this commission to do that, but collaborate with the city manager's office and perhaps be on the panel that does the review, the applications.
Commissioner Hernandez, you've had your, your light on for a while, apologies.
Thank you. As we're talking about all this, we're also talking about a possible two-year work plan. Which one do you want to work with? You want to go with a one-year work plan or the two-year?
If, I, I tend to think it's been such a process to get this work plan going in the first place, and I think we should do a two-year work plan rather than start the, start the timer right back up again to create another one.
Okay, because then that's going to make a big difference in what the ask is and how the breakdown will be as well. Okay, so we're going to run with the two-year.
Okay. Through the chair. Is there a reason it's only two years? It's not maybe some five-year goals with, is there a reason for that?
I believe a two-year work plan is manageable. Five years, you can't say five years, you don't know what funding's available, you don't know who will be on the commission to be able to carry out those goals, things may change in five years. You can always update the work plan. So if in fact you want to be that ambitious and do a five-year work plan, what does that look, no, I'm just saying, what does that look like? Two years, you know that this is a project you may want to do, or these are projects you may want to do. The first year, your projects may be something as simple as tabling, the brochure, going to conferences, things of that nature. And then the following year, it may be something that's more in-depth as the registry or something like that, once you get the funding.
Through the chair. So, so maybe it's not a five-year work plan, maybe it's a five-year strategy, not so, so much the work. Maybe it's some goals for the commission as far as, I mean, I, you know, of course it's culture and arts, but maybe there are some long-term goals you're trying to reach, but the work plan is two years. I don't know, I'm just throwing stuff out there.
I would say we actually, this is, we, we have goals, we passed the goals, we have long-term goals that exists. That is one of the things, I think, even though we had talked a little bit about asking Councilwoman Mateus, what's the progress of this, but we did, they exist. We have them, we will share them in the work plan.
Okay.
But through the chair.
Commissioner Allen.
You're new. Good question, though. Keep them honest. Make sure that you always ask, what's the status of that thing we all agreed to? Because it's very easy to just, oh yeah, we talked about doing something about that. And then you got to come back to that, so, good, good question.
Commissioner Hernandez, do a follow-up.
Yeah, I was looking back at my notes from the September 22nd meeting, and then I wanted to make sure, because it wasn't mentioned in Commissioner Thorson or Vice Chair Vidor's notes, were the conference training fees. And I don't know the cost of those because I didn't go, but you guys would, you know, kind of get a ballpark idea of that, so if we can get the ask, then we can get the go.
Through the chair, thank you for the reminder.
And through the chair, you may also want to use information that Chair Wise provided in September, because that also included some comments from Chair Wise and Vice Chair Vidor. I didn't rescind it because you had it in your September packet, but all of that should be gathered together and any new ideas, because I think as you go through the process, you'll think of more things to include. As the conferences, we've talked about that a number of times. We've talked about tabling a number of times, and things of that nature.
Sorry.
With that, if there's anything else, I think that is, we've touched on everything, and we can move on to item 10, announcements. If there are any general announcements anyone would like to make.
The Vallejo Naval Historical Museum is going to be once again hosting a Vallejo Open Studio, which is an amazing event that happens November 8th and 9th, I believe that's Saturday and Sunday, throughout the city, a bunch of different art organizations and artists open their studios. And the Vallejo Naval Historical Museum has traditionally given the entire hall to the artists. If you're involved, you have one of your art pieces on the wall in the museum. And oftentimes, it is somebody who has never had their art on that level, so it's really exciting. It's all of November. And also this year, the Tiny Art Show, Small Artworks, is going to also be in the Rotunda. This is another wonderful group of artists. Liberty and SB have put this together, and it's the first time it's going to be happening. So also, all through November, up through the holidays, so please check out the website. And we have three days, the third Saturday of the month, so if you'd like to come checked out. Thanks.
Any, any additional announcements? Great. Item A here, 10A, we did want to discuss the next meeting November, on November 24th. If we perhaps could get a list of who would, if, who will be here then for a possible meeting?
Right, I would like to make sure we will have a quorum here, so if you have not, I discussed this pre-meeting, but if you will look at your calendar to let me know if in fact you will be here that Monday before Thanksgiving, if you can get some nods of heads tonight, that would be great. So Vice Chair Vidor says she will be here, Commissioner Allen says he's going to be here because he may be here for November, December, and maybe January of 2026.
Wait, what, did I miss a memo? No, 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 no. My parole is up December, I've done eight years, so.
So, so has Dahlia.
But, but, you know.
Yes, but.
But it did.
It's not the years, it's the mileage. So she, I think she's, she's going strong. Vice Chair, thank you.
But there is a statement say that a commissioner can remain there until their replacement if you choose to do so.
Bless you, Chair. I think you want to find someone else, but thank you, thank you very much.
And so Commissioner Allen will be here on the 24th of November. Commissioner Schaefer, you'll be here as well, Commissioner, Vice Chair Wise, you will be here, Commissioner Hernandez will be here, and Commissioner Miller will be here. So that's six of you. By then, they, they're appointing commissioners, I'm not certain when this commission will be appointed, so I will see you on the 24th. The item will be work plan, we'll discontinue with the work plan. The ad hoc committee will make their presentation. Unless there's anything else you would want there, I think we're, you have momentum going on this.
I just want to say through the chair, we are dedicated.
Through the chair, do you, Vidor, Commissioner Vidor, do you have the copies of the old work plans that we have presented in the past so that you have some sort of template to show Commissioner Wise?
Through the chair, I have everything.
Thank you.
Fantastic, then, next meeting will be November 24th. And with that, motion to adjourn. Seven sixteen.
Seven fifteen, yes.
Motion to adjourn at 7:16 PM and 27 seconds.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You like doing that, don't you?
They're never going to leave that out again.